All right, there we are, there we are. Okay, good morning, everyone. All right, it's good to see you all again, such a beautiful day. Thank you all for being here. Let us, pause for a word of prayer, please. Father, in the name of Jesus, we just come before you this morning to say thank you for your grace and mercy, Father God. We're here because of you and we ask that you would cause us, Lord God, to be more like you, to understand what your ways are and to hope that our ways will line up with your ways and our thoughts with your thoughts. So we thank you now for the opportunity to serve. We thank you for those who have gathered here, Lord God, to witness the conduction of business in Montgomery County Government. We ask that you would be with us, lead us, guide us, and order our steps this day, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Good morning. First, we'll go over our list of visitors for today. We'll hear first from Kristy Thornton with City-County EMA. The county engineer George speak. Our director of risk management Holly Leverett. Manager of Public Affairs Hannah Hawke. Weatherization manager Donnie Barber from Carp Deck. Vice President of Development Becky Saunders with Liberty Learning Foundation and Board Chairman Robert Wagstaff with All Collaborating to Serve Community Development Corporation. Kristy?
Good morning.
Good morning.
So our point of date on COVID, we had twenty-two thousand nine hundred thirty-three Montgomery County citizens that have confirmed COVID cases. One hundred and fifteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-one of our citizens have been tested. Some of those were more than one. And we've lost five hundred and thirty-three confirmed deaths for COVID vaccine. They still do not have it confirmed down in the county as you asked for last time. Still been asking for that. Over the last fourteen days, though, our number has started to increase. We've had two hundred and thirty-eight cases over the last fourteen days, with three thousand six hundred and fifty-four people actually being tested. So we always want to know about that COVID vaccine and we know that we have significant vaccine hesitances throughout the county.
Sorry. I usually speak loud enough. We have had eighty-seven thousand one hundred and twenty-eight of our citizens that have received at least one dose and that has us at thirty-eight point four seven percent. We have sixty-seven thousand one hundred and three of our Montgomery County citizens that are fully vaccinated, bringing us to twenty-nine point six three percent. We continue our efforts, reaching out, seeing if anybody would host community events and we still attend Stop the Violence campaigns and things like that with vaccine, with our partners, with Alabama Department of Public Health, Montgomery Fire Rescue, and any effort that if someone wishes to get vaccinated, we have it readily available. We have had, I know Commissioner Harris has asked, thirty-eight thousand two hundred of our African-American community members that have been vaccinated and twenty-seven thousand eight hundred of our Caucasian community. Most of the rest are less than ten thousand people have been involved in that. Kind of bringing a accumulation of everything. Sixty-four point two percent of our Asian population of Montgomery County has been vaccinated. Twenty-eight point four percent of our African-American community has been. Thirty-four point five percent of our Caucasian community. And sixty-six point six, and I wish they'd have put at least one more on that, of people with mixed races have actually received their COVID vaccination. So that's how it's broken down right now. We are watching the Delta variant and watching and communicating with our hospitals to see if there's any uptick there that we need to be aware of so that we can make sure and show that information to our elected officials so that y'all can make the reasonable changes if anything were to come up. Right now, we're not seeing an elevated number here that would bring that to an area of concern for you. Yes, sir?
I'm concerned that that number, the number of people that have been vaccinated, it's not moving fast enough, it seems. Are we offering any kind of incentives? Are we doing, do we have an incentive program to get people vaccinated? What are we doing now? I know at one point we were, we had full-scale program trying to get people, make, bring awareness. What are we doing now? I noticed nationally, it's on the rise and a lot of jurisdictions are upping their ante in terms of trying to get the word out to people. I think the most effective, it seems, is having people in the community, people that they trust to encourage them and that type of thing. What are we doing along those lines and what are the plans?
The COVID Task Force has actually reached out and I know Commissioner Senkey's involved in that and trying to work with our pastors and different community leaders to try to encourage. We've done neighborhood canvassing to try to push out information so that they are aware of it. I do not have the means to do a incentive. We've worked on different projects with different philanthropic groups, trying to work on some incentives for individuals that might be vaccine hesitant. We're actually hoping to engage and start having maybe even going to neighborhood association meetings and discussing with them. And if people, I know it's a very personal issue and they don't want to speak in large numbers, I'm absolutely willing to get off into smaller rooms and actually have conversations with people, to tell them the pros and cons of it and to kind of see what their hesitancy is and see where we can help with that.
I think that'd be helpful.
Yes, sir.
If we could do that. I talk about it whenever I speak to a neighborhood association and I'm perfectly willing to be an ambassador to whatever I need to do to help to get the word out. And maybe, maybe, maybe a letter to, to the physicians, the local physicians, family doctors.
There are several doctors that have been highly vocal, Dr. Thrasher, Dr. Solinsky. I'm sure we can get them on board to help with that, to kind of give us their voices and utilizing what they know, being a pulmonologist and things like that, where they're actually working with this, the vaccine or the COVID cases in the hospitals. Most people have gotten to the point where they're just wanting to get back to normal and that's where they're, they haven't changed anything they've done throughout the process so they don't feel that they need to get it. And that's, that's what we're combating now is...
We're fast losing that...
Yes, sir.
Getting back to it. You know, I've planned a trip and I hope I don't have to cancel it because these people won't get their shots. But, you know, I just thought of something. I know that UAB, there's an ad running with, with, with the doctor, that's, that's Doctor, that's Judge McPherson's son, by the way, that's doing the commercial. I don't know that anybody around here know him. It might be effective and, I don't know, maybe the commission would be able to support it. It might be effective to get a local physician who's trusted in the community to do a, do a spot and we pay, or maybe do a PSA to run it, to encourage people. Because we, we need to be doing something, I guess, and something visible, something that shows that there's an interest in it. Kind of point out what's happening in Montgomery, our low numbers. Twenty-eight percent among African-Americans by the mean, what's it, overall, it's thirty? What'd you say?
For the, at least one dose is thirty-eight percent.
Still, you know, yes. But, thank you, thank you for...
Well, Kristy, I would like to see us going back to some of the initiatives we've done at first when, you know, like Carver High School and some of these, the fire station and stuff like that. Because the governor, she took us off all of that, but that don't mean the city and the county can't continue to doing what we're doing. These people live in Montgomery County, in the city of Montgomery. I'm not worried about the state. So, I don't mind, like I said, you don't have all the resources, but I don't mind giving you some resources. They have some locations like that. I think Dan had the location down in Smiley Court, Smiley Court somewhere. Where was it?
We did Smiley Court, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
We can reach out to Alabama Department of Public Health and see if we can do another mass vaccine.
What you, what you think? We got to do something more than what we've been doing. I didn't know you were working with them, but...
It's kind of difficult to get people to do it when they're reluctant. I, you know, I see people every day in the healthcare arena and these people have chronic conditions, my patients, but they are still reluctant to take it. But I was curious as to something you said, you all attend some of the civic, of the community events and you all have the vaccine available. I was a little curious about preservation of the vaccine. Do you have it readily available and you can give it at that point? Because I was talking about that with my executive director and we had some reluctance, some hesitancy because of the, the need to preserve the vaccine.
We would bring out just a small portion and that way we could go get more. But yes, sir, we have the cooling, we have the ice packs, we have the electronic data logger to sit there and monitor the temperature. We have everything available and it's mobile. They were actually projects where they were going neighbor, neighbor to neighbor and door to door for a while with the project.
Well, we'll get together, Ms. Chairman, and think and talk about some things. I think there are some other things we could do.
I'll get with Alabama Department of Public Health if we get something going.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
We will go over the items to be discussed at the formal session. First, we'll consider an inter-local cooperative agreement with the city of Montgomery for the 2021 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant for the sheriff's office. Consider a professional services contract with the city of Auburn for law enforcement services at major sporting events and our special events. Consider the 2020 annual report of insolvent errors in assessment and taxes in litigation for the revenue commissioner's office. Consider a lease agreement with East Montgomery Investment Company for additional warehouse space for voting equipment. Consider the 2021, 2022 annual community corrections plan. Consider county levies for alcohol licensings for new license types. Consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies. Does anyone have anything to add?
I want to do twelve hundred dollars to Memorial Heights, to Barnes Memorial Heights. Jane, did y'all get my baseball stuff handled? I had a check this evening. Cheryl, can I get the checks today? Okay. So that's, I think you got that, this is a thousand dollar for AUM, they going to the World Series and Belingrave five thousand, they going to the World Series. So I'm gonna do it through Recreation.
Is it quicker to do it that way?
Yeah, I think so.
I, I got a, I got an email from a group that just made it to the, it's a girls softball.
Yeah, they did.
Did you get that?
I didn't get that, but yeah.
And, but they're, they're leaving on the twenty-third.
Yeah, that's, what I'm saying, that's really not one of that because I got somebody leaving Thursday. It's quicker that way.
Yeah.
What you saying? Cheryl, you shaking your head? Cheryl, talk to us. Yeah? Huh? Okay, when we start doing that? Yeah, because sometime when I appropriate it, it'd be three or four days and these people are leaving in the next two days, so I want to make sure they get it. So go on, can tell them. She can cut it today, she's...
Yeah, but I, you know, I, I wrote her back and told her I didn't, I didn't think I'd be able to do it because they're leaving on the twenty-third.
Mr. Chairman, one thing I've done, I've had the same situation and what I've done is promised the league the money and the league will forward the All-Star team the money upfront.
Belingrave can afford it.
Okay, but we've done that before.
They, you know, can, yeah.
All right, Doug, you probably, are you familiar with the softball team? I think her name is Kristy Reese?
No, I know, I've got one from Montgomery American going. One from Montgomery Gray is going.
Well, this is the one. I think it's Montgomery Gray.
I think that's it.
You helping them?
No, no, that's not...
That's the email I got.
Yeah, I didn't get that one. I helped Montgomery Gray for the state.
She didn't have an amount.
You helped Montgomery Gray for the state, too. I did, too. I think there's one still that...
Well, this, this team, so they, they just, they just won.
It was softball, it was Montgomery Gray then.
Yeah, they just won their way into the, I don't know, the champion.
But if it's Montgomery Gray, you could give the money to the league and the league could afford them. Bill Gunner handles that one.
Yeah.
But they didn't say how much. I wrote them back. Hopefully, they have enough to front it and then I can get help on the back end.
Yeah, you can. If it's Montgomery Gray, Bill Gunner will front them that money.
Okay, all right.
So the only addition to agencies is twelve hundred dollars to bonds for Memorial Heights?
So Cheryl, what you all saying, the one thousand, I say through Recreation will go through, offer?
Anything that says it's going to Recreation Department, we can cut the check straight to the entity.
So it still can come out of my appropriations then, right? Okay.
Yes.
All right.
We're gonna write those checks today.
Okay, that's a thousand dollars to AUM?
From agencies?
Yeah. Five thousand from Belingrave, which is Gateway.
So that's AUM. Consider miscellaneous appropriations to education. Is there anything to add there? Consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue. Any additions? Consider a bid award to Stivers Hyundai for sheriff's office vehicles. Consider budget change request number one for the detention facility. Consider budget change request number six for the engineering department. Consider budget change request number three for the personnel department. Consider position fill requests for the detention facility for two corrections officer trainees and two corrections officer corporals. Consider position fill requests for the engineering department for a county traffic control tech one and a county road equipment operator three. Consider a position fill request for information systems for an IT manager network infrastructure. Consider a position fill request for tax and audit for a revenue auditor. Consider position fill requests for the youth facility detention for four juvenile detention officers. Consider travel training request as listed. Those are the items for the formal session.
So they are short for detention out there, the juvenile detention, too?
Yes, sir. They are, they are suffering seriously.
Where's the director?
She's probably on the call.
Is she on the call? Anybody know what she's on the call? She here? Tell her to speak up.
Brandy, can you join the meeting, please?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
Can you speak up?
Yes, ma'am.
Can't hardly hear.
Can't hardly hear.
I'm here.
How long have you been short on these employees?
Two positions are...
I know you haven't come before to say anything.
I can't hear.
Two positions are four times.
Somebody, can you, what about the volume?
The gentleman retired. And another position, the gentleman resigned.
Well, we're not gonna be able to hear them, they need to be at the meeting.
How about if we get her to drive over and join the meeting a little later?
Before we close, y'all be here anyway. I mean, we need to know about these things. I didn't know that they were short like that.
They've had, she's had several resignations.
Well, we didn't know. Did y'all know?
I'm sorry, she, I should have let you know that.
I can speak some, too, that they had an altercation at the detention facility, which actually injured three of our workers.
So why she didn't tell, come here and tell us that? We didn't know that. We just found out today?
Yeah. I'm, I'm sorry, I'll take responsibility for that. She's, she's communicated with me about that.
Yeah, that happened last week. They had a very short week because three of their workers were out on workers' comp and then with her other resignations, I do know that it, it's been challenging for her.
What you doing, fighting?
They've got a very bad group of children right now in the detention facility, in the youth detention facility. One of them tried to escape and there was an altercation and so three of our officers did get, corrections officers did get injured, so. And it's really put a staffing shortage for her because when they have to be off, that leaves a very low staff.
We, we really shouldn't have to find out about these things at these meetings.
I'm sorry, again, I, I should have communicated that to y'all. She is, she has kept me informed.
Well, we need to be informed.
Yes, sir, I understand.
Okay, let's move on.
Next, we'll hear from county engineer George speak.
Good morning. Under future agenda items, number three, we've got an agreement with ALDOT for resurfacing Meriwether Road from US 231 over to Pike Road. And MPO, it's eighty percent MPO funds and twenty percent county match. And we would like recommended approval of that agreement. It's just a standard state agreement.
Because I got all the roads.
How long is that stretch, George?
It's about four, a little over four miles, I think it was four point, four point three miles.
From 231 down, all the way down to?
To Pike Road.
Yes, it runs from 231 over to Pike Road, Pike, Carter Hill, Old Pike, right in there. It's out where our, where our District Two maintenance camp is.
Yeah, yeah, you gotta read them right there.
That's okay. MPO money, right?
Yes, MPO money and we got the match budget. Let's see, on personnel items. Number 10. We've had some retirements and promotions in our construction section and we, we need to go in and do some adjustments on our positions. And what we're asking is, if, we're asking for two civil engineering technician one positions and then in turn we would delete a civil engineering technician two position and delete an engineering aide two position. So we add two positions, delete two positions and we hire a new employee to fill one of the vacant, the vacant engineering aide one, I mean, two slots, excuse me.
I had a hard time understanding the net. What's the net?
The bottom line is we'd save about eighty-five hundred dollars on wages when it's all said and done.
Eighty-five hundred annually?
Oh, yes, sir, that's way, annual wages when it's all, when all the, when the whole thing's over with. So, but we would need the two tech one slots to get started and then we'd delete out the other two slots and then hire a new employee at a lower salary, which would offset the cost and which end up saving them roughly...
Commissioners, we at a point, you know, every meeting now, we, we hear people need employees. I mean, probate, engineer, revenue, everybody needs employees. Have we decided, have we put everything on our website saying that we need these employees? I know personnel, there's only personnel. But we're gonna have to start doing something. We're gonna have to advertise or something. Everybody else do it because we short. Sheriff say he about short, see Murphy, Sheriff, they short about what, fifty-some people?
Fifty-eight.
Yeah, see that? Yeah. So, you know, it's, we at a point that we got to start doing something different.
So Ms. Douglas is here. I was just curious, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I know we just recently looked at a pay increase and so forth as incentive to recruit and maintain competent staff. What else is going on that's driving this? If you wouldn't mind speaking to that, if it's okay with the chairman?
That's okay.
Because I know I was talking to Carp Deck yesterday about their diversity in terms of their employment and I was told that they just can't, you know, get the folks to, to accept the jobs over there.
George, we got you covered.
Oh, great, thank you.
Good morning. The situation that we're facing is actually a nationwide issue. It's been a hot topic at my HR, human resource meetings. It's something that we're all struggling with. It's something that I'll be talking with you all a little bit later on about because we can't continue to do things the way that we've done them. We've really got to go out and seek the person that's currently working, you know, in order to fill the slots that we need to have filled. So we're gonna have to do things a little differently. We actually, one of the personnel analysts and I, about a week ago, we, we're on the radio talking about our jobs and the different opportunities that we have. So we're just gonna have to continue to look for different avenues, seek different avenues. But it's a nationwide problem and, you know, money's not the only issue. People look for a lot of different things and some of the bigger jurisdictions, one of the issues that they're facing, unlike what we did here, a lot of people teleworked and they ended up really finding it that it fit better into their lifestyle and they don't want to stop teleworking. So when I do my nationwide calls, they're running into issues where people don't want to come back into the office now. They want to continue to telework and some of them are resigning and freelancing or doing other things or seeking other opportunities. So it's not just something that is just specific to us, it's a nationwide issue. So people are being very selective, too, about where they work. So we're really gonna have to let people know about the, what I call the total rewards from working here, not just the salary, but the whole package. And people also, you know, it's, it's a different world that we live in now and people leave jobs more so, the number one reason why people leave jobs is more so because of their supervision and their, their work group that they work with more so than anything else. That's the first thing that causes people to seek that other job, more so than pay because most of the time when a person accepts a job, they know what the pay is, but it's the working conditions and working environments. So we're doing things holistically. We're, we're in the first phases of a leadership training program that we have put together. We started off with the youth facility and some of their employees are going through it as our pilot group to do this program. So we're trying to take a holistic look at it because it's not just one thing, it's several things and it didn't get this way overnight and it's not gonna change overnight. So it's gonna take some time and it's gonna take all of us to do it. And as I encourage all of you all, you know, when we have openings, the ones that work in the departments, you're the best recruiters. You know more about the jobs than we do. You know more about people who work in those fields than we do. And we've been working very closely, I know, with the sheriff's department office and we're trying some new things and putting together some new things for them. So we're open to doing things different because what, we can't keep doing the same thing because we're gonna keep getting the same result. So we've got to look at different things and different ways to recruit.
Diversity, clearly.
I'm so happy that they've stopped talking about handouts as the reason why people are not working because of the stimulus payments. I knew that was never the reason.
Well, that was part of the reason, not the whole reason. That factored in.
It wasn't as big a part of the reason as people made it out to be.
But it was part of the reason.
There are, there are people, there are people who realize the time off saves money on the cleaners, it saves gas money, it saves daycare money and they're more productive at home. There are people who were tired of working for four dollars a day and people trying to hard, trying to steal their tips from them. They found better jobs during the pandemic. The pandemic pointed out a lot of things that were happening in the, in the economy that people weren't satisfied with and they found a different way to live with it. That stimulus check, if, I can tell you this, if unemployment is higher than a, than a job pays, then yes, I'd take unemployment. If you have, if you're looking for an employee and you're gonna pay them less than they can get on Alabama unemployment, then you don't need anybody working for you. I never thought that that was the reason. And I'm, I'm glad to hear that, that the approach now is different. You understand and realize that there are other very valid reasons why people aren't returning to these jobs and it, and it's hard to get employees. And what we ought to be about doing is trying to make the county the place to come to work, you know? And if there are, it's situations where people can do this work remotely, then we should provide, should allow that or should have, make provisions for that. If you have to be here, you have to be here. We should make sure that the pay is such, that it's attractive, that we are competitive. The sheriff department has to be competitive with, with other law enforcement agencies in this region. We do with administrative workers the same. And not take the damn look that somebody's at home not wanting to work, just wanna sit around. You know, that, that, that never gets you anywhere thinking that way. What it does is it makes people distrust you and dislike you if you, if those are the kind of statements that you're gonna make.
Carmen, I'm reading.
I'm, I'm happy to hear that, that the approach is changing.
Carmen, I'm reading that we're hopeful that we will see some additional influx into the workforce this fall. Not just the, the workers shifting around, but, but workers going back to work as a, you know, a segment to help this problem. But I really appreciate your statement because the, the research is crystal clear. People don't leave bad jobs, they leave bad supervisors. And the top, of the top three issues, they did a survey of the American workforce and of the top three things that are most important to the American worker, and that's whether they're public or private sector, money does not rank in the top three. And it's like what you said, they need to feel appreciated, they need to, they need to like their, their job, their supervisor. And I appreciate that, your knowledge and you're a hundred percent on track with everything you've said. And it's also the millennials and the Gen Z who have a completely different, they're not, you know, the, the, the Gen X and the boomers were, they, they got out of high school or college and, and went to work and spent forty years and got a gold watch and a pension. And that model is gone. And the Gen X and the millennials are not looking for the gold watch and the pension. The pensions don't exist anymore. So, we've got a decent package, but how we market it. And that's why Montgomery, we've been talking about this, I see sharing with the chamber, we've been talking about this for years, is the quality of place. Millennials and Gen Z, they care about where they live, not what they do as much. They wanna live where they wanna live and then wherever they can go to find money that will sustain their lifestyle. So, it is a radical shift in, in personnel needs and issues. And it did come to a head during the pandemic. Like Commissioner Harris said, a lot of things were brought to light and a lot of, you know, different variables came into play that exacerbated, you know, it was that perfect storm. But thank you for your leadership as we come out of this, looking at it completely different in how we market ourselves as a city, a county, but also as a governmental entity looking to hire decent, decent people to work here. Appreciate your leadership.
I was just curious, Carmen, about diversity, that your research, saying thing about diversity in the workforce and how maybe upper level management and the lack of diversity may contribute to some of the employment challenges?
Actually, I'm in the process of our EEO plan, I'm in the process of updating that. And as a whole, our diversity numbers in the county do not look that bad. We're pretty much on track. There's some areas that we are lacking, but as a whole, when you look at them holistically, we're doing pretty good. It's some areas that we can improve on, but as a whole, we are looking pretty good. So, we do track it for one of the grants that we have. We have to do the EEO plan and it's time to update it. So, as a whole, our numbers look pretty good.
Well, Carmen, I've always appreciated your latest, leadership. And though you have always had a vision for personnel, and a lot of times, your group is blamed for certain things, and I know that's not true. It falls back into the supervisors. You know, they don't tell you what they want, how they want it, and when they want it. But you understand when we, we complain about it, they start pointing their finger at personnel. And we know it's not there. But I don't wanna wait till the fall, the Christmas or whatever for us to start doing things. We got to be more aggressive as a unit here. And because we are suffering. I don't care about the nation. I'm, I'm just complaining and I'm worried about Montgomery. Because everywhere you go, the McDonald's, the, the churches, the Popeyes, all, all across town, everybody, the department store, everybody needs help now. And they all not professional people. People working in no place are not professional. They just need labor. But Montgomery County, we've tried a lot of things. We do employee appreciation. Dan has been talking about raises for, ever since he did on the commission. But then here the state of the animals come and tell them we can't show appreciation. Right?
They have very specific.
Yeah, what I'm saying, but you just, where did, where did it stop? You know, we can't do what we want to do. We wanna show appreciation. So, how do we attract that?
There, well, there's remarkable power in an individual department head giving public praise to their employees. Each time, you know, Sheriff Cunningham brings his deputies over here who have won awards, that is giving praise to your people. And that's what employ, that's one of the main things employees seek. We don't have to, you know, in the depart, individual department heads, we need to encourage them on how to interact with their employees and maybe even some, some supervisory training for department heads. But, but giving that public praise to employees for a job well done is critical in getting them to stay because again, they don't leave bad jobs, they leave bad supervisors and money notwithstanding. Like Carmen said, they know the salary they're gonna make coming in and they accept it. So, that's a, you know, that's a rabbit hole, that's a waste of a chase. But we've got to start, we've got to focus on our department heads, taking even better care of their people. And some do, some do, don't get me wrong. But that's, that's the connectivity right there.
Carmen, that might be a good idea to, to try to identify some of those programs or lectures or whatever that you might wanna expose the department heads and supervisors to train, different types of training on how, on this new, new wave of employers and employers and this new, these new methods of recruiting and, and these types, these types of things. Maybe we need to re-educate or try to educate.
Because if you, if you've got baby boomer department heads leading a bunch of Gen Z and millennials, they're not effectively communicating. They don't understand what those Gen Z need to be satisfied in their job. And I mean, and it's not, I mean, it's just generational differences have a big impact. And we have up to five different generations currently in the workforce. And they've got to learn how to work together and in this new world we're living in.
And one last thing I wanna add, and I know Chairman Dean has always been big on this, and it's something that we haven't done effectively in the, in the public sector, and that's succession planning. And another thing, it's like it's a double edged sword that we're facing. Because a lot of the people who have been in the public sector for so long, you know, they're retiring, they're leaving. So, we have, you know, that compounding with the, the people leaving creating more vacancies that are retiring. Then we have the, you know, shortage of people to come in. So, there, there is a lot of things. But, you know, people do need to, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying that money is not important because people do need to make a living wage. Because I always tell people, you bring your whole person to work. So, if you're at work and you're worrying about how you're gonna be able to make ends meet, you can't be the best employee that you can be. So, I do commend the commission on the, the approval that you did for the pay plan study and implementing that pay because I think that is important. Because you, you bring your whole self to work. And I think people used to think, you know, you're one person at home and another person at work, but you're not, you bring your whole self. And, and, and pay is important, you need to make a living wage. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Just to clarify, item number three goes on the next agenda and item number ten for engineering. That George presented.
Okay, yeah.
Next, we'll hear from Director of Risk Management, Holly Leverett.
Good morning again. So, I released a request for proposals for the inmate healthcare back in April. We ended up having, I sent out twelve, we ended up getting five proposals back. I met with the sheriff and Colonel Pritchett, the director of the detention center, to go over their concerns before we started evaluating all of the proposals. And their top concerns were lack of appropriate credentialed medical staff in the facility, inability for medical staff to handle inmate issues within the detention facility, wait times for inmates to be seen upon initial intake. So, when the inmate comes in, they should be screened medically. Some of those wait times were twelve to twenty-four hours before an inmate was being screened. The number of off-site trips to medical providers and to the ER, and a lack of a dialysis provider for those inmates that were needing dialysis. So, basically, this all, there's a correlation between all of these issues and the number one concern, the lack of credentialed medical staff within the facility. If you get the right people treating those inmates, screening them immediately upon intake, you're able to control any chronic illnesses that the inmate population may end up having. So, with this proposal, I did require that there be an RN and a nurse practitioner onsite twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Whereas right now, we've got LPNs that are being, that it's being staffed with, which is, is not appropriate. And we required a RN at booking so that there would be an RN there to screen these, these inmates upon intake. When inmates have to go off-site for medical visits because they can't be handled onsite, it also takes away what we were just talking about, our staff. Our staff has to go with them, they have to stay with them, and that costs money. And we're fifty-eight short in detention already. We, we need our staff onsite working. So, that is another thing that was considered. I also talked with Brandy in the youth detention facility because this contract is gonna be awarded for both detention and youth detention. She said that a psych prescriber was her need. So, in the proposal, that was what was asked, it was, was for some psych hours to prescribe if necessary. So, after reviewing the proposals, and there's about a foot deep stack of proposals back there that we got those five, and meeting with two of the bidders, it is my recommendation that we award the contract to NAF Care. NAF Care came in with the best proposal, with the best staffing plan of all of the proposals that we reviewed of the five. They are, the, the annual amount they came in with was two million eight hundred twenty-five thousand four hundred and sixty-four for the detention center and two hundred thirty-six thousand eight hundred and seventy-six for the youth detention center. They came in lower than what we're currently paying at the youth detention facility. It is a good bit higher, but like I said, we've got to get staffing in there to lower some of our other costs because our off-site and our pharmacy costs have jumped up fifty and sixty-five percent respectively. So, what this should do is lower those other costs. NAF Care is headquartered in Birmingham. They are handling the Jefferson County and Mobile County detention facilities, so they are very familiar with county detention facilities here in Alabama. They have also assigned an operations lead to our account who is familiar to Montgomery. She is the retired director of our detention facility, Gina Savage. So, she is very familiar with the challenges and the operations of our, of our county detention facility.
How much of an increase is it over?
So, if you compare the current vendor's price, what that they came in with and our, the one I'm recommending, it's a six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar difference a year. But now, we are spending a lot of money on off-site trips, which I anticipate will diminish. NAF Care, in their proposal, was able to show that some of their facilities they're currently using, that their contracts reduced by forty percent to overall trips by fourteen percent inpatient admissions and fifty-eight, well, inpatient admissions was a fifty percent dis, inquiry, a decrease. And fourteen percent ER and forty percent overall trips. So, they've got, had success in reducing off-site trips, which is what we're looking for. They have telemedicine specialists that can see inmates in-house to where they don't have to be taken out. I also left the scorecards that we used to, to judge and gauge these proposals are on your, your seats.
Roughly, what are we spending on the offsites and?
Offsite. So, right now, this is just, of course, last year, the numbers were lower due to COVID. But this year, between October and June, we've spent roughly six hundred and fifty thousand dollars on offsite. Medications, pharmaceuticals, we've spent for that same time period, three hundred and one thousand dollars.
And we're looking to put a dent in the, at least a dent into that.
Right. Well, we can get control over it. Right now, it's out of control. We can get control over it. I didn't mention, NAF Care also is a wholesale pharmacist. They have their own pharmacy where they get drugs at wholesale cost. And they have agreed to just pass those costs on to us. So, we will not be.
I saw that. What, any idea what, what kind of saving that amounts to?
They have anticipated close to seventy percent.
Really?
We are also looking at participating in some federal grants, some three forty B programs that we can work with ADPH to try to see if we can use that. We have also been approached by Harvard University to participate in an accreditation study that's being conducted in partnership with them and the National Commission on Correctional Healthcare. We have been approved, there are only forty detention centers across the country that they're looking at wanting to do this. And to do it, we will get a reduced rate for accreditation. And NAF Care has agreed to pay the difference. So, we will be accredited at no cost to us.
We had a discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
And Holly, I thank you for the time you spent with me on yesterday trying to alleviate some of my concerns. If you recall, Mr. Chairman, this was a conversation we had last year when we awarded the contract to, to Dr. Bates and his organization. We was concerned about a lot of off-site trips, we were concerned about formularies, we were concerned about RN staffing, and a number of other issues, concerned about the psychiatric drugs, particularly at the youth facility and all that was supposed to be addressed with the contract that we currently have. Apparently, it was not addressed. And so, it seems like to me that this, the entity that we're trying to replace has violated their contract. They said that they would have all of that, the personnel and all these other things that we're currently talking about, and they have not done that. So, I'm wondering if anyone has even looked at whether or not they have violated the terms of their contract.
Part of the problem with the, the last contract was that it left it up to the vendor to determine staffing needs. And when you do that, it's hard to specifically document what you want and what, if they're in breach, how they're in breach, because we left it up to them. In this one, in this RFP, I specifically requested certain credentialed nurses to be staffed and where they were to be staffed. So, that matricy that they gave us will become part of the contract. So, going forward, we will get reports monthly of staffing, staffing shortages, and if there were any shortages, why there were shortage, so short. I'm, I'm not saying the contract possibly did not get adhered to. But going forward, we have better. But going forward, we have better practices in place to manage the contract to make sure that everything they're saying they're going to do, we're going to hold their feet to the fire to make sure they're doing it.
Holly, I want to thank you for your work also. In the state of Alabama, Department of Corrections not trying to hire you?
I hope not, because I'm not going there.
Okay, thank you. Because you've really been an asset. You've really been an asset to Montgomery County. And these are the kind of things that we need to make changes and to monitor. So I appreciate it. Anybody else? So she's recommending it with next agenda.
Next agenda.
Okay.
And we'll work on the contract, and I'll have that for y'all to look at next week.
Okay.
Next, I'd like to hear from Donnie Barber with Carp Deck. He has some, two waiver rule items.
Good morning. It's been my privilege to work with Montgomery County and through Carp Deck for the last 17 years, managing your weatherization program here in Montgomery County. And it's been a wonderful experience for me. But we are here today with our 2021 contracts. Our DOE O2821 contract for $145,097 this year. And also, the HHS LIWAP contract, O2821, for $132,950 this year. And that is for the purpose of us weatherizing 19 homes here in Montgomery County. We wish we could do more, but of course, as you all know, money always limits what can be done. So we are asking to waive the rules and to add these contracts to your agenda later because we're already four months, nearly four months into the contract. And that's due to the fact that DOE gets them out late, and then the state gets them to us, and we've just gotten them. And now, we're asking that we can go ahead and move on with them. The contracts start in April and they end in March. So we're under the gun already to get them done this year.
No issues with waiving rules?
Okay. Now, okay, no issue with waiving rule, but you say you did 19 homes?
We will do 19 this year, yes, sir.
We want you to identify, and we need a copy of the 19 homes you all do. I don't think we ever got copies of what they do each year.
Are you talking address by address, or just?
I want to know where they are, neighborhood.
Are they on the same neighborhood, same street?
Yeah.
No, sir. They're different places in the county. Some are in the rural areas, some are here within the city limits. It all depends on the application, who's applied and who's eligible.
Whoever you're awarded to and you spend the money on, we just need a copy.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I think you've posed that question before, and Mr. Greg Clark, who's the executive director of Carp Deck, is saying that we can't get that information. For whatever reason, they don't want to expose the recipients and so forth. But I'm still not sure about that. I don't know if we need to get it under Freedom of Information Act or what method we need to employ. But I'd like to see it too, to see exactly who's benefiting from the program.
Are you familiar with that rule that you came to identify?
I do know that we are under the, we have to protect the privacy of the individuals who receive the information. You can come to our office and you can see the files. And I don't know whether I'm speaking out of turn here or not, but I would have to ask Director Clark about that. But all of those files are kept at our office, hard copy. And we try very, very hard because we have all very personal information, social security numbers, everything of these individuals that receive this assistance.
We're not asking, we're not asking for that. We're asking for the addresses and what was done to them and what was done. We don't even want to know what their shared payment was. Just to know what areas are being, it seemed to me we would be entitled to that if we were on this grant. And if we're not, I'd like to see the regulations that deny us that information. So you can let Mr. Clark know that.
Understood, yes, sir.
So we're really waiving the rules, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We still have several items to cover.
You got the detention, you come on down, sweetie.
Good morning. I apologize, we were getting ready for a federal audit. I want to inform you about the positions. We have one gentleman retire. We had another gentleman quit and did not give us notice. We have two part-time spots, so that's two full-time, two part-time. And we have to have five staff members on shift at any given time to meet our standards. We have two gentlemen out on workers' comp, and we have a male and a female out on FMLA. So that's why we're strapped for workers.
How long has it been going on?
You know, we can't request a position until the person actually vacates it. So our workers' comp has been going on for about two weeks. The FMLA one started yesterday. Another one will be out for at least another month, month and a half. And then, all the positions we can actually fill were requested as soon as we could fill it.
Can you explain to them also the male/female needs?
Sure. At the youth detention center, only females can work with the girls, and only males can work with the young men. And so we're in a pinch for men.
For men?
Yes, sir. So I feel very hopeful that the increase in money will help recruit people. We just have difficulty recruiting.
What's been the issue, you know?
Somebody may start and decide that that's what they want to do, but after behaviors that happen in a detention facility, they don't want to have anything to do with it, and they'll quit. So it's more than they're really willing to sign on for. But I do apologize for not being here earlier.
How many, what's your population at?
24. But we have four and three in court this morning. And so I'm hoping somebody might be able to leave. We have to be 1:08 in waking hours and 1:16 in sleeping hours.
What's the ratio, boy, girl, under 24? How many females you got?
Two.
Anybody else got anything?
Thank y'all.
You got two more, right?
We have two visitors and several items to consider.
They're getting visitors.
First, we'll hear from Becky Saunders with Liberty Learning Foundation.
Good morning. Thank you for having us today. I'm Becky Saunders, Liberty Learning Foundation. I know you've all heard from us in the past, and we would like to tell you how much we appreciate the funding that you have given us in the past as well. We are a 501(c)(3). We, a civic education program. We teach civics, character, financial literacy, American history, career readiness, and essential skills. We have grown like crazy these last few years. We currently serve 47 counties across our great state. Over 52,000 students we will serve this year. And more importantly, we are serving 2,700 second graders here in Montgomery County. So I'm pleased to say that we are serving every second grader in our school system. The cost for that is $97,000. And we need help, obviously, funding this wonderful program. We are teaching these students very important life skills, helping to make them better citizens. That's, the purpose of the program is to put out supercitizens. And it's a wonderful program, and I know you all are familiar with it from the past. Today, I have with me a special guest here. I'm going to let her introduce herself. She is a principal at Brew Baker Primary. She also sits on our advisory committee for the Liberty Learning Foundation, and we're so happy to have her with us today. And I'm going to let her tell you a little bit about how this actually impacts the students in your county.
Thank you, Becky. Thank you so much, and thank you to our county commission. I am Jaclyn Brown Wright. I'm the principal of Brew Baker Primary School, where amazing happens for kids. If you haven't been to our school, I would challenge you to come. It's one of the most amazing places to educate little ones. We do have pre-K through second graders at our school. And this past year, even in a pandemic, we made our Liberty Learning kickoff phenomenal and amazing for our little ones. At a Liberty Learning kickoff, imagine Lady Liberty, live and in full color, coming out to dance with little ones and teach them about what it means to be a supercitizen and what it means to be a citizen of the United States of America. At Brew Baker Primary and many Montgomery Public Schools, we serve students who are not, who may be first-generation citizens. About 40% of the students that we serve, Coach Joyner and I serve at Brew Baker Primary, are of Hispanic heritage. And so we want to do a good job of making sure that all of our students, even as young as pre-K, first and second grade, they understand what it means to be a contributing member of a prospering community. I did invite Coach Alan Joyner here. Coach Joyner is an integral part of our team. And though he does not teach the Liberty Learning program, he and the other coach that was with us, Coach Stephen Ryan Wells, they were integral in making sure our team still was able to come together in a pandemic. Liberty Learning was the foundation for us actually coming together at our school last year safely in a pandemic. And so we want to continue to have these opportunities at our school, not just for our boys and girls, but for what it reinforces for us as adults. We're a diverse school, an intentionally inclusive diverse school community at Brew Baker Primary. And we need programs like Liberty Learning. So please, please consider Liberty Learning for us again this year. And if there are any questions about the program, I'd be more than happy to take those at this time.
So you all have the data. Of course, we know what you do, and this is a very, very nice brochure and so forth. It certainly shows how professionally you all are in terms of what you do and how you present what you do. Test scores improve, behavior issues decline, children are inspired and empowered, and each year's program prepares students for successive programs and for becoming life, career, and citizen-ready. You all have the data to support that behavior issues decline and test scores improve.
I do, especially at Brew Baker Primary School. Would you be pleased to know that I am a first-year principal? And in January of 2020, there were 300 office referrals at the school of this last year. By May of 2021, we only had three office referrals. And we did handle those that came to us, didn't we, Coach? So we are all about that positive climate and culture. And not only have we increased or decreased our student discipline, but we have actually increased our student achievement and begun to close our reading achievement gap at Brew Baker Primary School, where amazing happens for kids. So with our reading data, so with our reading data, again, I invite you to come to our school with our reading data and with our stellar kickoff for Liberty Learning and making sure that all of our boys and girls feel special and safe and needed and supported in our school community, we were able to close our reading achievement gap from being one of the lowest-scoring schools in Montgomery at 18% reading proficiency pre-pandemic. We're at 34% now, and that's with kids not in the building with us. We are on the move at Brew Baker Primary. Liberty Learning is one of the pieces. Come check us out to see what else we're doing.
How long has Liberty been at Brew Baker?
This is the eighth year at Brew Baker. However, we had a different type of kickoff and a different type of passion and a different type of leadership at Brew Baker that really understands the value of this program. I've seen it work in other counties other than Montgomery. I led at the district level in Conneka County, Evergreen, Selma, and Dallas Counties as well. And I was actually a part of the seventh-grade kind of pilot of that program in another district. So this is a program that addresses the civics and social studies and community and mentoring needs of children in second and fifth. But there is also a seventh-grade opportunity as well, and I would be more than happy to talk with Becky in our district about that as well.
Becky, is there two presentations in Montgomery County? I know all the schools don't, you don't go to every school. I know y'all bring them in.
Do you want to talk about that? We go to the Davis Theater. We have two kickoffs first semester, two kickoff second semester. The dates are September 22nd and 23rd for the first semester kickoff at the Davis Theater, 9:30 in the morning. Would love to have you there. That's what this program is about, is community coming together, supporting these kids. We want these kids, you know, we tell them, look who's here today. You know, our county commissioners are here, and they're very busy making your community a great, safe place to live, a thriving, prosperous community. But they're here today because you're important. Because without these kids that are coming along, you know, what, you know, we've got to have seats, we've got to have bodies to fill your seats when you are not here. And that's what we're teaching these kids. And that's what they have got to begin to understand as our future citizens. And so, but yeah, we have kickoff for first semester and also for second semester at the Davis Theater. You will all get EVI's for these events. And then we also come back together for the celebrations where they honor local heroes within their community.
I love that part. They honor a local hero or a local supercitizen. And I believe that that person is given a pin or lapel pin or Statue of Liberty trinket that has iron from the actual Statue of Liberty. So it helps the children connect all of the work that they've done back to Lady Liberty. And with that kickoff, it's like the most insane pep rally for little ones. I guess it's a social studies pep rally, but it is so much fun. And I guess you can hear the excitement in my voice, but I love it too. And so we hope that you guys would consider allowing us to continue to have this program. And it has been definitely beneficial for us. And like I said, for us to allow, for it to allow or be the thing that drove us to come together last year at our school. That meant a lot, not just for children, but for adults who needed to be able to see each other and celebrate something together.
I've been to the program, but didn't you all have one at Park Crossing or something?
We did, we did. Before we were able to get everything set up at the Davis Theater, which just proved to be a bigger space for the students to come together. And it's beautiful. It's beautiful to see these students come together on their journey as to become our next great Americans. And it's beautiful. And I hope you'll come out and see it this year.
A huge part of transforming our climate and culture. And we have really worked hard on that at Brew Baker this year.
And we would respectfully ask for your support this year. I know last year was a tough time for funding, but we would love to see you come in at 25,000 again. That you did that for a few years, and we appreciate it so much. But this is such an important, an important program for these students. And we would love to see it grow here. And if I can find the funding, and I'm working very hard, this is my community. I want this program here in Montgomery County more than anywhere else across the state because this is where I live and I care about these students. And I would love to see the seventh-grade program be brought along. This is where these kids really take the next step, and it's incredible.
And it's also huge, too. It prepares the students. They have to take the 12th grade civics assessment. That is now a state-required assessment. So if we don't introduce them to civics until their senior year, we're setting them up for failure. Why not immerse them in it early on, in those early developmental stages through this program?
And last year, we piloted one last thing, our high school program in Dothan. This year, it's going to be in Dothan and in Coleman. They have embraced it. It's huge. I could spend a whole hour telling you about that. I won't let you go today. But just would love to see that happen here in Montgomery County, and thank you so much.
Do you get any support from MPS?
No.
Have you asked them for any support?
Well, no.
Why not?
Well, generally, schools across the state really can't afford, from what we're hearing, to spend monies on programs. from what we're hearing, to spend monies on programs not aligned to reading in math. And yeah.
Well, you know, I just think that when I was in school, there was a class in the ninth grade you had to take, and it was civics. And they just took it out. And that did a whole lot to let people know the importance of citizenship in this country and the duties of a citizen and all those things. And you're starting it at a low level, and I've always been supportive of this program. I was supportive of it the first year that you started out in Montgomery and still support it. But, you know, and I'm also, you know, an advocate for putting civics back into the curriculum and not just high school like it was when I was, it was ninth grade when I was in school. But it should be starting around the time that you're starting your second grade, I think. And I don't know, you don't know if they have enough money until you ask them. In my mind, they just got a hundred and twenty-something million dollars trying to figure out what to do with that.
Well, okay.
So that might be, might be a good idea to talk to them about that because I really would like to see that.
Mr. Chairman, I've always, I love this program, and I've seen it firsthand, and I've seen its effectiveness. I particularly like the financial literacy piece that it offers. And I've heard many principal testimonials, and I've been to the pep rally at Davis Theater, and it is really exciting.
We had a pep rally at the Davis Theater.
Don't you forget Brubaker where amazing happens for kids and adults too.
And great principals are desperate for great programs. And I know our district attorney has a great program in Ali that he takes into schools. This is another one of those programs that comes in and supplements what the schools are trying to do, and it works. We've seen it, we've heard it, we know it. I encourage the commission, that they have my support. I would like to see us now as we're coming out of a very odd year that a lot of things were lost, some things were gained. But I think now more than ever, we need to strengthen this program. And I would like to see the commission give the twenty-five thousand dollars.
You all came on a good day. I hope you know what that means.
That means yes?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We appreciate y'all, and I hope to see your faces at the kickoff, the pep rally, and thank you so much.
And I know I'll see you at Brubaker Primary School where amazing happens for kids. Come on, Commissioner Harris, bring them all back.
Thank you.
They didn't hurt themselves by bringing you with them.
Thanks, y'all.
So we add twenty-five thousand from joint designated for Liberty Learning. We have another visitor, Robert Wagstaff with All Collaborating to Serve Community Development Corporation.
Good morning. Chairman Dean and members of the commission, thank you for this opportunity to come this morning. With me are two members from our board, Marjorie and Joyce. Joyce is a board member who with the Housing Committee, and Marjorie is our secretary. Each of you should have in your package a letter from me that was dated June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one. I'm here this morning to ask for your support. I know one of the first questions you may ask is that, why would anyone continue to invest in an area where you see property value has been going down? Well, the reason why, because many years that area has been neglected. Nothing has been done. And I think the same approach was taken when the city of Montgomery looked at the near place. And when they looked at the near place, they decided, look, here's an investment that we can make to make an improvement in the community that would make dividends later by generating taxes. So here we are with the same problem. If you ride down sixteen-hundred block of E.D. Nixon, you'll see that blighted property has been transformed into beautiful houses where families live. And we want to continue that path. We want to continue to do that. And we are here today to ask for your support. We are speaking from volume from the things that we've already done. We've generated beautiful houses there that were once unsited property. No one wanted to live there. But if you walk there, if you ride down there, you walk down that street now, you see a new house. You see houses that have been completely renovated. And why was that? Because we want to invest in where we work, where we worship, and where we live because we know that it does make a difference. When we start transforming that community, peoples take notice. If you want someone else to come invest in your community, you have to take an interest. You have to invest in it in order to get somebody else. So what are we doing? We are here asking you to consider what we've done. We went to the city in two thousand and eighteen. We did get a CBD grant. But however, because of COVID, we were delayed in terms of getting that project started. And in the process, building material has gone up astronomically. Everyone knows that. So we got caught in the dilemma. So our dilemma now is that we need some additional funds so that we can go ahead and get this project started, get this project completed, and we get a family in there, a low to moderate income family, and therefore another blighted property be gone. I think that if we invest now, we'll get dividends later. That's the whole process. So what I'm asking of you today is consider supporting this effort, supporting this project at sixteen-fifteen E.D. Nixon Avenue. You can ride down the street now, and you can see what has already been done. It speaks volumes as what this nonprofit can do and is willing to do if we have the chance to do it. So what I'm asking you today is for twenty-five thousand dollars to help support our efforts. I'm cheering because I'm excited, just like the peoples, it was here before. They're excited about what's going on. I'm excited about when I can make a change in the community that'll help somebody have a better quality of life. And that's what we all about. We are citizens of this community. We live here, we work here, we worship here. So what can we do? We can make a difference, starting with one thing at a time. So here I am in front of you this morning, asking for your support that we may get this done.
How much was the city grant?
City grant was ninety-three thousand, two twenty-five. And ACT was putting in ten thousand, but we, because of the cost of material, we got caught. So somebody may ask the question again, well, why would you invest that kind of money when you know you're not going to get the return? You don't expect to get the returns now. You get the returns later because property value will continue to increase. Others will come into the community, will make investment, and there you have it. It will continue to escalate. You have to start somewhere.
Brother Wagstaff, you've been helping people for a long, long time. You're not compensated for doing this, are you?
Nobody on the board has paid one dime. We're all volunteers. And why we do that? Because we care, and we want to give back to the community.
Mr. Chairman, housing is certainly a concern of mine. And of course, you know, I represent a district where you do most of your work, and we certainly have a lot of vacancy abandonment leading to blight that impacts our health and wellness. So all of what you're doing certainly is related to having a wholesome community. Education is important, economic development is important, healthcare is important, and housing ranks right up there in terms of quality of life.
It does.
So I certainly appreciate what you all are doing. Even if it's just one house at a time, it's making a difference, and I know that it's making a difference. And it's important if we can eliminate blight, then that improves all type of outcomes for our people. Education, I mean, imagine what it might be like if you grew up in a neighborhood where there was nothing but blight and vacancy and abandonment. You would have some attention deficit disorders too, once you came to school, if that's all you saw day in and day out. And so housing and health is, has a direct correlation. I certainly support it, and I hope that the commission would see fit to fund that balance that you need for this particular home.
I look at it this way. We have five vacant lots in that same area that we hope to build new houses on. And think about five new houses in that area that is already where improvement has been made. And you look at that in terms of, think of the property value. How is that going to change? You can't continue to look at something and say, it's no good if you're not willing to invest to make a difference. And here we are, we are doing our best to make a difference because when you try, nothing beats a failure but a try. If you don't try, then what you going to do? What you going to get? You're not going to get any results. So this is why we're trying, because we know that it can and will make a difference. And we asking you to support us and helping us to make this difference for the lives of individuals for educational, whatever the purpose may be. We are here to try and do our best to make a difference.
Mr. Wagstaff.
Yes, sir.
You and I have been knowing each other for a long time. And you've been coming, requesting funds from the county, I guess, for a couple of years. The city, we have to get our money out of the general fund or whatever. The city has CBG, that's what you got. They didn't get it out of there.
That's federal money.
Yeah, they are.
Yes.
So we don't have federal dollars. Now, whatever the commission says to do, I'm going to go along with it. But I have to speak from my heart. That's not my district, and I have, I have some greater needs in my district. And if I would support things in my district, why was that particular place chosen to do houses?
Because?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, because I ride, I go to church that way every Sunday, and I just haven't seen what you seeing. I haven't seen it. I mean, I've seen the vacant lots, I've seen the boarded up houses, but I haven't seen that one or two houses that you all have already done.
Well, Chairman Dean, let's look at this as a corridor.
No, I want to tell you what I seen now. You can't tell my man on what I've seen.
Okay. If you start at?
Whatever the commission is going to do, I'm going to go with it. But I'm a realtor also. And yes, I think it's, I think it's not a good investment. I think it's not a good investment. You know, we need some Bible neighborhoods over there. We need somebody that really got some money. Not saying that what you doing is irrelevant. We need some people with some builders, with some money that go in there, change that thing out wholeheartedly. That's a very popular street, Gould Street, nine E.D. Nixon.
Yes.
Got a school down there surrounded by dilapidated houses. And Mr. Sank is talking about the dilapidated houses all the time. So I mean, when you start from Fairview and come on down, go on up to Jeff Baby where my church is, that's all I see, I see blighted structures.
Well, I grant you, there is some, but let's take this for instance. Starting at Fairview, come now, what are the first thing you see now? The near place. If you never start to make an investment in your community, then nothing will change. You have to start somewhere. So you come down to Douglas Street. There's Douglas Street, there are three new houses there. Across the street, there's a new house there.
The near place had builders and stuff, you know, they didn't do it with taxpayers' dollars. Were you asking for taxpayers' dollars now?
Well, taxpayers invest in the community because we pay taxes, and that's why we're here. All of us are contributing back to this cause. And that's why we need this, so you can help by having us to put a boost. Like the lady said, is she excited about exciting things that are happening?
What about the next house? You're not going to come back and ask for the next house, right?
There's no, I can't say you that. But what I can say, you can start from here and go forward. So I know you, there's a need in many areas. But if we don't start somewhere to help and address those needs, nothing will change. And I just believe in this project. I believe in what we're doing because we are making a difference. If it's not with one family at a time, it does make a difference.
But I'm talking about what I've seen.
You haven't seen anything different than the community where we're doing sixteen-hundred block?
I would like, I would like to see, I would like to see.
I would love to take you down there today.
I would like to see what Connie Hopper did and community action, all those, build neighborhood. I'd like to see that.
Well.
Show those.
And there has to be those resources generated to the project that was donated to Connie Hopper.
So what does the commission, what does the commission want to do?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to see us fund this project. And I'd like to have a more comprehensive approach too. I've been talking about land banking. I think land banking perhaps is one option that we could use to help rid these communities of some of this vacancy and abandonment. Purpose Built Community has a great model out of Atlanta and Birmingham and other cities across the country where they need the quarterback, and the quarterback is the nonprofit. And they are able to do things of, just of a great, large magnitude when they have the quarterback. They build the schools in the community, the health cares in the community, the businesses in the community. And so we just need a model. And I think that ACT CDC really has the experience. We just need to support them in terms of helping them develop their capacity to get these things done. And so I would, I would like to see us, the commission.
Mr. Sank, since it's in your district, we are part of your leadership.
Yes, sir. Well, I would appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. I would hope that we could.
I just want to say one thing. I support what you're doing. I've supported you in the past. But my issue has been in the past and remains the same. You talked about vacant lots. I'd like to see you work on the vacant lots and build new structures. Some houses, you just can't rehab reasonably. You can't reasonably expect to rehab a house for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a twenty-five thousand dollar neighborhood. You just can't reasonably do that, no matter what kind of future you can see in terms of what's happening on Gould Street. So I understand that prices for materials have gone up and that impacted it. But when you talk about the end results is putting in a hundred and thirty-five, hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars into a house on E.D. Nixon, then, you know, you're not going to get that back ever, probably. And even if it grows up, I mean, the houses that you build new are probably going to sell before it does. But my point is, I'm more comfortable supporting you if you take a vacant lot and you're putting something on that lot that's market.
Okay.
You know what I mean? That's market value. There's no way this house is going to be market value.
Well, you're absolutely right, but here's what we're looking at because you started somewhere.
You don't, you don't, you don't, you don't, don't dig a hole over there.
No, no.
We've already, we've already said we're going to support you. I'm just, you know, I don't want you to put the shovel down.
When you apply for a community development block grant, there's certain restrictions. And now all the restrictions are, it has to be used for rehab. It cannot be used for new construction. We have to go to the home. It cannot be used for new construction. Only can be used for rehab. And the federal government come in and look at those, say, those projects, say, yes, we are willing to help do this.
But they, you mean you can't use it for new construction?
No, you can't, not CBD.
Don't they have money for that?
They have what are called a home program. And the home program was very limited funded this year, so that's why we had to go that way.
Mr. Wagstaff, I think you're going to have the support. And I know Mr. Sank and Mr. Harris and myself, we don't want to be on what the John Fourteen Roscoe Miller Show.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so, but I'm just saying. We, but this one time, I mean, one time, but I can agree with one time.
All of this money is for one house?
Yes, it is.
How many bedrooms?
Three.
Who will be occupying this house when it's completed?
Well, we have to go through the federal guidelines to get a family who meet the qualification based on their income.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Any other questions?
No, it don't have to be next agenda.
So how much from what fund?
Well, we, who all agree? I know we got, I know we got three, so.
Designated.
Yeah, designated. Even though we, going on record as a bad investment, we just don't still.
Florence, is it possible to make this a different vote? Because I'm not supportive. I'm supportive of what you're doing, but I think this is too big of an investment for one house. So I'm not going to vote in favor of it.
We can do a separate vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I need to add one item to the, to my, to my personal designated appropriation. When you're ready, Florence.
Okay.
To the Deerfield HOA through bonds. Deerfield HOA, two thousand dollars. Thank you.
Okay. So there it is. What you got?
Michael Burdell asked to come, even though was not on the agenda, has a grant deadline he wanted to present.
You don't need a walking fan now.
Good morning, and thank you, Commissioners. The Montgomery, Helping Montgomery Families Initiative is seeking your permission to pursue a U.S. Department of Justice grant to combat school violence. DOJ is going to award one hundred and forty grants of up to one million dollars. There is no match requirement from the county. The deadline to initiate the application process is August the second, the day before your next meeting. HMFI is very optimistic about the grant because it is requiring grant recipients. because it is requiring grant recipients to do many of the same things that HMFI is already doing, forming multidisciplinary teams and conducting threat assessments to possibly identify students who could lead to dangerous circumstances in our schools. I think some of you participated in a recent virtual call of our multidisciplinary team, and you're aware of just some of the tragic conditions our students are facing. And we would appreciate if the commission could give us the permission to pursue this grant.
Okay, we'll weigh the rules. We'll weigh the rules.
Thank you very much.
We still have items five through eight to consider.
Go ahead.
Amendment number two to a contract with Safeguard Pest Services for pest control services.
Next agenda.
Amendment number two to a contract with Liberty Disposal to add a dumpster at Elton N. Dean Senior Park.
Next agenda.
Contract with Harrison. Amendment number three to a contract with Harrison and Associates for landscape maintenance at the industrial park.
Next agenda.
Consider an alcohol license application for a special event for a Latino festival on August 7 and 28.
About every other week.
Next agenda.
Item number nine is board member appointments to the Montgomery City County Public Library Board.
Yes, Janelle Bell Haynes, you're going to be on that with her mama.
With her mama, yeah.
Okay. Janelle Bell Haynes, she's going to send her VTA.
All right.
Okay, good.
And that, I believe, covers all the items.
Okay. Do we need a break?
No, no.
Okay, all right. Okay. Okay, let's see here. Okay, okay. Need about a three-minute break.